I will probably explain my shirt before we begin. So this is the result of a bet I lost with Mayor Pam Moot from Yarmouth. I bet that, yes, I'll say that, I bet that the lumberjacks would beat the Yarmouth Mariners, and of course, I lost. But she was nice enough not to send me their road jersey because I would much rather wear this pink in-the-rink jersey than the yellow thing that they wear when they're on the roads, and that probably doesn't help our relationship with Yarmouth. But it's ugly. And she knows that, I did tell her. So a bet's a bet, and I lost fair and square, and apparently, I will be sending this on to, who are they playing? Edmonton now?
Edmonton.
Edmonton, yeah. So it looks like I might be sending this to Edmonton, so good luck to that mayor. It should fit, swimming in it. But we wish Yarmouth the best of luck. There's local teams we're going to get in that series, and so we hope that they make it to the finals. And Pam's a great sport, and she drove this here herself. She couldn't wait. So there it is, Pam. There are some changes to the agenda where we don't have the April 9 minutes available yet, so those are deleted off the agenda, and we are adding the Bridgewater Farmers' Market Food Truck Rally under Business Rising and Unfinished Business. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Counsel McDonald, seconded by Counsel Frasier. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, down to, well, to do announcements first, any counselor announcements of things that are coming up? I'll give Counsel Thorburn's regrets. He is volunteering all week at the SO Cup, so everyone knows the SO Cup is taking place at the Lunenburg County Lifestyle Center, which is exciting. Took in one of the games last night, and it's good hockey, and I would recommend you pick up some tickets. There's still tickets available, and it goes until Saturday. The championship games are on Saturday. And that's where Counsel Thorburn has anything else? A nice thing about being mayor is I can make any other announcements. My mother is here, visiting from Ontario, so it is a big deal, because I don't think she's been to an official council meeting since the election. So, hi, Mom. How come you're turning 70? I should be the one that's embarrassed, not you. Do you want to say hi to your parents?
I'm embarrassed for you.
Hey, didn't one of your parents just turn 70? Is that something you want to make public?
No.
No? Okay. Okay, I'm in trouble now. Introduction to new staff. We have some staff here, and someone's introduced, and then we have, I'm hoping that their senior managers are here to introduce our new staff.
All right, I'll start. Nelson, come join me. I'd like to introduce Nelson Nolan, who is our Planning and Sustainability Intern. Nelson joined us the first week of March. He is a recent graduate from the University of Alberta with a degree in urban and regional planning, and he had never set foot in Nova Scotia until he arrived here to come work for us, so we're really pleased to have him here. We put him to work very quickly on Energize Bridgewater and the Smart Cities application, so you'll actually be hearing from him later in the agenda today.
Excellent. Welcome. Mr. Hurdle is introducing the others.
Evening, Counsel. The next individual on your list was Catherine Norman Donovan, who has been, as yet, unable to join us tonight, so perhaps introduce her at another date. This is Amy Oikle. Amy's a student at Prairie Education Center, who will be graduating this June. She's currently in the midst of a 100-hour co-op term here with the town, where she's been given the opportunity to hone her PR and community marketing skills. So far, she's had the chance to help out with marketing the transit program towards students, working with the downtown planning advisory committee, and soon, she'll be helping to plan the upcoming grand opening for the Bridgewater Skate Park. Amy will be attending St. FX this fall, and we're very happy and excited to have her while we can.
Great, thank you, and welcome. Congratulations on graduating this year. We already did counsel announcements. I wanted just, our new way of doing things, proclamations. We don't make the lengthy proclamations at council anymore, but I do want to just note that May is Lyme Disease Awareness Month. And of course, this is something very personal to many people, not just here in this room, but certainly in Lunenburg County. We see Lyme disease as something that is probably going to reach epidemic proportions if it hasn't already. It's a very serious issue, and I know that we have members of staff that have been affected by that through family members. So, May 2018 is Lyme Disease Awareness Month, and proclaim that in the Town of Bridgewater. Do we have any members of the public who are here as delegations? No? Nice try, Keith. All right, going down to planning items, we have an update for the Energize Bridgewater Program update. So Mr. DeVried and Nelson.
Looks a little smaller than it normally looks. Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. This is an opportunity for staff to provide you with a brief update on the Energize Bridgewater Program, ending the development of the Community Energy Investment Plan, which was approved here in this room in January. There were a few components to the program that were not complete at the time, and we wanted to bring that for you so that they could be a matter of public record. And we also have an update on things moving forward, mainly the Smart Cities Challenge. So we've got a small update for you on that. As you, does that work? Yes. As you're aware, the Community Energy Investment Plan that was produced by the town was a fairly groundbreaking document. We've certainly had some wonderful opportunities to present it to some different organizations that have been very interested in the town's work, and I think that it has clearly placed the town in a position of leadership, regionally and even nationally, and that will bring some good things to the town as we're offered some leadership opportunities to work with other communities and try some new things. In the development of that plan, there were some new things tried, and we're here to provide you with some of that feedback. So to provide you with some feedback on the evaluation from the plan, the report from the Discovery Fair that was held in October, and a toolkit we've developed for other municipalities, Nelson will provide a brief update on those things. Nelson?
Good evening, Counsel. Thanks for having me today. So the Energize Bridgewater Project Evaluation had four steps. First was the identification of success at the start of the project, ongoing data collection throughout the project, and a survey at the conclusion, as well as two focus groups. We could look at the five key objectives to understand the success that Energize Bridgewater has had so far. Is that right?
Let's skip to that later. I'll, we'll skip back to that.
You don't want your picture on the screen.
We'll give it a review of the Globe Award as well, because that was a big event in recent times. So the first objective is the community has really put forward a path for deep energy reductions and infrastructure transformation through the creation and implementation of strategies laid out in the CEIP. Through community consultation to address concerns related to energy, and by laying out the options for an energy shift in the CEIP, Energize Bridgewater has helped to reimagine the community's relationship to energy in all its forms. And the program has also addressed energy-related concerns and future security by advising a way forward to a decarbonized economy. The CEIP provides the groundwork and certainty for investment, and has demonstrated economic development opportunities that will form a transition to a sustainable future, and so continue to exercise community-wide leadership in energy sustainability by connecting with stakeholders regionally, building our network, and gaining recognition on a national scale. So based on feedback from the community, the feedback was overwhelmingly positive, and the Town of Bridgewater was even compared to the South African rugby team, which is quite impressive, if you're not familiar with the team. The energy partnership increased the literacy of the community on related subjects and resulted in a community of community leaders. The Living Energy Laboratory stimulated broader community interest and engaged different constituents in different activities, and community meetings and workshops were generally seen as engaging and educational. So going forward, we'll be reformulating the economic development strategy of the Town of Bridgewater around a low-carbon pathway that has already been undertaken, to some extent, with the Economic Action Plan. I will be managing risk and failure inherent to innovative planning practices. We'll be retaining community support by hitting the streets and communicating with the community, and we'll be developing groundbreaking municipal services that communities aren't traditionally used to providing. So now, on to the Nova Scotia Discovery Fair. So the fair was the last final engagement event of the Energize Bridgewater Pilot Project, and so to engage the community on clean energy opportunities within the community and the region. It was intended to maximize community interest and knowledge, as well as participation in Energize Bridgewater's key areas of focus, the partnered initiatives. And it was also an opportunity to showcase and collect feedback on the draft content of the Community Energy Investment Plan, which is now out. So there were 35 vendors in total, 10 workshops, three major presentations, and one keynote event. The estimated attendance was around 500, which was slightly lower than had been predicted, but overall, the ratings were incredibly high by both attendees and exhibitors. And right now, we're in the process of planning for the next Discovery Fair, which will take place sometime in the spring of 2019. So now, on to the Mistful Energy Planning Toolkit. So the purpose of this toolkit was to provide lessons and insights to other municipalities looking to undertake some form of community energy and planning. So it really helps communities to understand the different scenarios that they can produce through technical analysis, so that they can plan for the very long term. So there are four primary elements that contributed to the success of the Community Energy Investment Plan. They include continuity of leadership, which includes ensuring consistent staff, council support, and retaining organizational knowledge, a focus on economic development. Energy is a major expenditure for most municipalities, so there's less room to cut back on energy expenditures and increase economic opportunities, and also a deep technical analysis, which includes detailed modeling of different scenarios that can be planned for, as well as community engagement, which will be important as we continue to implement the plan. So Bridgewater's approach that's laid out in the toolkit include preparation, which includes anything from terms of reference to looking at governance structures, and inventory, so greenhouse emissions inventory target setting, so looking at long and medium and short-term goals, looking at the different scenarios and options that are available for council, and implementing the preferred option, which in our case is the low-carbon economy scenario, and then also the monitoring and evaluation of the plan. And so the outcomes that that's supposed to result in are community champions through education and inspiration, public knowledge, which is supported by helping the community to understand the benefits related to the low-carbon economy, looking at a pathway forward, creating an investment plan that looks at investment vehicles and investment entities, and many different co-benefits that can result from producing Community Energy Investment And that's it. So on to Leon.
Thank you, Nelson. The three reports that Nelson has described are included in your council package, and after tonight, we will make them all publicly available on the Town of Bridgewater website as well, so that those are fully visible by the public. I would add that the program evaluation and the toolkit were developed by Sustainability Solutions Group, which was our major consultancy firm that assisted us with the work throughout the process. Certainly, they had a lot of glowing things to say about the town. We paid them, but hey, we can tell from other communities' experiences that things went fairly well here. Moving forward, council has tasked staff with developing a Smart Cities Challenge proposal for Infrastructure Canada. I'm pleased to report that, as of this moment, we're about 99% of the way done with creating that proposal. The Smart Cities Challenge proposals are due tomorrow, so it's been quite an adventure getting that ready. We've done a number of community engagement activities, talked to quite a large number of stakeholders in the community and in the region to work with our idea of lifting 20% of our residents out of energy poverty by 2028. That's the statement that we've narrowed the work in on, following a presentation here at council about a month ago. The analysis that was done in developing the Smart Cities application was fairly detailed. We collected a lot of testimony from, Jessica, could you pass me a water, please? Thank you. We collected a lot of testimony from community partners, and we had a community survey that was completed by nearly 200 community members, as well as around 30 local partner organizations. So we're fairly pleased with the response. At the end of the day, we identified eight important outcomes that could result for the community, from taking a smart cities approach to creating change with regard to the town's energy systems, particularly focused on those most vulnerable and lower-income families. In order to summarize this work, I think the best way to present that to council is through a short video that was produced for us by CDA University, who assisted us with the communication effort around this work. So I'm just going to look that up and let that tell you in its own words what we hope from this application. Bridgewater is located on the south shore of Nova Scotia and sits on the beautiful Mahave River. It's a place that deals with a lot of real, ordinary community issues and also tries to solve them. Bridgewater and Atlantic Canada in general are susceptible to energy poverty, and the reason for that is that we have fairly old and inefficient homes. We have high energy costs as a region, and we have low average incomes.
The reality for people is that they cannot eat, pay their rent, and pay their power bill all at the same time. People have to choose between having a roof over their heads and having heat. If you have to go to the creek to get water to flush your toilet, if you have to huddle around a little propane stove in your house with the windows open so you don't die, and you can't go anywhere because you're just barely able to pay for your rent, they're barely surviving.
Energize Bridgewater is really about change. We have a really amazing opportunity here to do two important things. One is to get our community off fossil fuels. The other one is to take huge bite out of poverty. As a community, we can save nearly $2 billion in energy costs over 32 years. We can achieve that by investing around $375 million in community infrastructure, in homes, in buildings, in transportation systems. We can create over 3,000 person years of employment in doing so, and we can reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by over 5%. By focusing on energy poverty, as we contemplate shifting our energy systems, it means that we're able to shift our energy systems without leaving anyone behind. So that video is now located on the Energize Bridgewater webpage, sorry, the Smart Cities Challenge webpage on the Town of Bridgewater website. It also includes a number of important pieces of information about the town's initiative, as well as the partner organizations that have all basically signed on in some way, shape, or form to help the town with this ambitious project. And this will be the location where we will publicly place our Smart Cities application, which is required by the application process, so that anybody can read what the town submits. So that's our presentation and update for this evening, and we're happy to take any questions you might have about that.
Questions from members of council? I have a quick one, and that is, so Smart Cities applications are due tomorrow. That's the first round of applications, and then those get whittled down by the fall?
I think we actually hear back within, is it August?
It's sometime midsummer.
Midsummer, yeah.
On the day of what we find out. But it's somewhere in the summer that we become the finalists. If we're awarded as a finalist, then we'll work until sort of early next year on that particular application, and then we'll find out sometime in the spring of that year if we become sort of the winners of the Smart Cities.
So a year from now is the anticipated outcome of the Smart Cities Challenge?
Yeah, they say winter 2019. That's what they say.
Who knows? Winter might not come. That's great. Any other, any questions from members of council? No? Thank you.
Okay.
It's great.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work, you and your team. Our next item is e-billing, and we have some finance staff to give another presentation. We'll queue that up.
Thank you very much for having me. My name is Lisa Feander. I'm the Customer Service Representative here at the town. Most of you know me, I'm sure. I'm excited to be here with you this evening to focus on e-services, and really with a real focus on e-billing, which we just launched with the March 31 Water Bills. So e-services can help us take our customer service to a whole new level, allowing residents to connect and communicate with us beyond office hours from anywhere at any time via the web. People are busy, really busy, and this allows them to do business at their convenience. And we just recently had a gentleman who owns a property in town who actually works overseas and signed on, so this type of thing allows him to stay connected with us. It also allows us as a town to stay transparent and connected with the changing needs and suggestions of our residents. E-billing allows residents to sign up to receive their invoices via email. It's convenient, user-friendly, and has many great features and benefits. Customers are able to access their accounts 24/7, view payment and billing history, securely pay their water bills or property taxes, manage bill payments for family members who need assistance, which is really helpful, update personal information without having to call me or stop by, help the environment by reducing the amount of billing paper used, pre-authorized payments, and pay with credit card, which is really great, because prior to, very recently, we didn't accept credit cards. So by giving them the option of paying the fee or not, then they can make the decision whether they would like to use a credit card or not. This is the insert that we're going to mail with the interim tax bill coming up. It looks almost identical to the one that we sent with the March 31 Water Bill. And the objective here is to share the benefits of e-billing, which you can see at the top here, and then to give a really good description on how to get started. So here, you'll see the web address that links them right to the login page, so they can enter a sign-up key. Sign-up keys are printed at the top of each person's bill, and it's specific to their bill, so that when they log on, they can see their bills online. Kind of mumbled there, sorry. So you can see all that there. And then also here, I actually, I put my contact information there as well, in case someone had any difficulty signing on, or they had any questions. So the web address printed on this page will bring customers directly to the login. So here, they can enter, they hit sign up now, and they'll be sent to a place where they enter their sign-up key, their personal information, and they can get started. Here, there's a sign-up guide that's very specific and detailed, and they can also request technical help here on the front page. Also, I thought was kind of neat, here we have the ability to change the message and the photo, so we can share special moments with citizens. So the insert directs people directly to the login page, but people can also access e-services through our website. So we have this link right here, the e-services link, which is kind of neat, because it gives residents the opportunity to also surf through and kind of see what's new and happening with the town. So this slide and the next two will provide you with just a snapshot of what customers will see when they log on. So here, people can control and manage their accounts. They can change their password, change their preferences, and down here, they can link additional town accounts. So if they have more than one property or more than one meter, they can add them there so they can see each of them. There's also a place here to submit a service request. This feature isn't available at this time, but it is an avenue we are exploring and would like to implement in the future. People can also sign up for pre-authorized payments, so they can take a photo of their check, enter their information, and the payments will come directly from their bank So this is a customer's dashboard, and I created this to show you, to give you an example of what it would look like with the test tester. But if it was an actual customer with a balance owing, you would see that here in this spot. And then just below that, you would see a line that says "Pay Bills Now," which would direct them directly to a link where they have the option to select their payment and amount and type, and move forward. And the great thing about this is that customers will be able to see their payment posted immediately to their account. So here, you can see where it says "e-bills," just right in that spot, and if you click on that, that will bring you to this spot. So the top would show you how much, if any, if you owe property taxes or utility bills, so water meter invoices. Down here, there's, you can review transaction receipts and tax bills. These two are really kind of special in that oftentimes, people call and request receipts or tax bills for things like income tax purposes or to apply for grants, so they have the ability to access it at their fingertips, just right through here. Account summary, current balance, miscellaneous invoices, excuse me, miscellaneous bills, postdated checks, if they have any on file, and it also shows meter readings, and it actually monitors meter readings over time. And you can see a graph that would show you, you know, your fluctuation and how much water consumption you've been using over time. So if you're watering lots in the summer, you'll see that there. There's also a couple of different ways throughout here to set up pre-authorized payments. There's another link here, and then another additional link to add another account if need be. So that is my summary of e-billing. So I'm happy to report that, first, I want to thank you for having me, and I want to just let you know that as of today, we had 203 residents sign on, so I was pretty excited about that. And I just want to give a special thank you to some staff members who signed on early and who have been providing us with some really great feedback of how things are going and helping us work through some little hiccups. But I think that's it. I just, like I said, I wanted to thank you for having me, and it's a great new way to service our residents the best we can and keep moving forward with great customer service.
That's great, thank you, Lisa. Any questions from members of council? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Lisa, if you were a landlord and had multiple properties in town, can you link all those accounts to one single login and tick, 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 tick?
Yes.
Yeah, perfect. Counsel McDonald?
The opting out of the paper bill is still optional. They're not all going digital, and if you want a paper bill, you have to request it?
Correct. If you choose to go this route, there is no paper bill. If you request it, then I can certainly make sure that you were to get one.
Okay, great, thanks.
So the service request piece isn't active yet, right? That's not, we're not activating that yet?
Not yet. I think it's something I'd like to explore, for sure.
Yeah.
There's lots of room to grow there.
It's very timely. Counsel Frasier and I would have seen C, click fix at the FCM last year. Yarmouth is test-driving that now, so, and actually, what I heard from Yarmouth was, you know, they're going down this road, kind of hinted maybe look at other options as well. There's lots of players in the game, but I'm just really interested to see what other municipalities are doing in terms of how they deal with that. Are they seeing floods of people, you know, emailing about the same pothole, or, you know, how is it working? But I'm interested to see how we can digitize that, because people want to be able to report potholes or broken water mains, but sometimes don't know how to do it, and let's face it, we're electronic, we're electronic consumers these days, so anything to make it easy.
I just wanted to thank you, Patrick, for, Patrick created the inserts for both of those water bills, and I'm really thankful for that, and I mentioned it when it came up, and I forgot.
Deputy Mayor. So Lisa?
So Lisa, does Town Suite, it's through Town Suite, I assume?
It is, yes.
Does it offer an app and/or a mobile-friendly version? So if we went down the fix-a-pothole concept?
It does. I've signed on with my phone, as well as on my computer. And it definitely does change to be more mobile-friendly.
Responsive, yeah, okay. Perfect. That's a good question. Councilor Graves?
So the 2.4% charged by, is that like cost neutral? Is that what the credit card company did? So it's not a profit, it's not a way?
No, it's just a way to retrieve costs of doing business, for sure. Yeah.
And are there additional units or modules that can be added on in the future?
There are, yes.
There are?
There are.
Okay. And does the system have the ability to email residents? So Christmas on the Hayes is Saturday, Canada Day is coming up, those types of things? And?
I don't know the answer. I think that would be a great, do you know the answer to that one?
The CAO is saying that we're not allowed to cross that information and use it for different purposes, is that?
Yeah. Privacy, mostly. Like if we have information or collect it just for water bills, I don't.
So if they opted in, could we do it? Like if they gave them the option, would you like to list here about, not on a daily basis, but?
Probably, I probably would say that I would promote our Facebook and Twitter resource. That's something maybe we can look at, but.
I mean, it's a valid question. Just in putting my bank hat on, we do that because if we open an account for someone at the investment division, it does say, "Do you agree or not agree to share your email address with the bank?" And if they click "Yes," then they'll get the stuff from the bank. And if they click "No," then they're just limited to the investment division. So there must be a way to do it, but you probably have to be very clear on how you.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a good question, though.
And I guess maybe one more. What percentage is going to, how do you deem the success? When you get 75% or 50% of residents?
It's a difficult one to deem success. Because like, you know, from my customer service point of view, I want people to have, to do what they choose. You know, so if they'd rather come in and see me, or if they'd rather pay through the internet, or if they'd rather do it this way, then that's great. Cost-wise, as far as the cost savings go, if, once we hit the 400 mark, then that would, we would start to see cost savings there.
Okay.
In reference to postage, invoice paper, envelopes.
And then from a, from a, you had mentioned that a third-party person can pay the bills or manage the account for a family member?
They can, yes. Certainly, there's, it's one of those fine lines when it comes to privacy, right? It would have to be set up by the person, and then could be controlled by someone else.
That's interesting. I think that's good.
It'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you have a family member that's older but lives in the community and you don't. Yeah.
Do you promote that?
I, just in this, you know, it is on the, the list of features and benefits is on the inserts that we're sending out. So I guess that would be the way that people would see that that's an option.
Well, this should be probably some information that would go to our senior safety coordinator as well.
Yeah.
Because they would know who can and who shouldn't be sharing that information. As we've learned in presentations from that individual, there are certainly people that they wouldn't recommend are helping those individuals. As we heard the statistics on elder abuse a few weeks ago. So, yeah, we should be kind of promoting that where we can, I think. Good question. Any other questions from members of council? Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Next item is recommendation of the Bridgewater Board of Police Commissioners for citizen appointees. So we have a vacancy on the board. That will be at the next meeting. We are sadly saying goodbye to Commissioner Capello as he moves to Winnipeg in June. So May will be his last meeting. So he is the past chair and gave us a great deal of his time and service and was an extremely valuable member of that board. But the recommendation is to appoint David Walker to the board, a name that is familiar because not only was he the mayor, but he was on that board for quite a bit of time and served in various capacities in the Nova Scotia Association of Police Boards as well. So his appointment, if approved by council tonight, will be a good addition to that board if someone would so wish to make that motion. Councilor McDonald?
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Bridgewater Police, sorry, the Bridgewater Board of Police Commissioners and appoint David Walker to the Bridgewater Police Commission for a term effective immediately and ending October 31st, 2020. In summary.
Second, Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Recommendation of the CAO Financial Literacy Series partnership. This was fascinating to read. And Councilor McDonald's going to give it up?
I need to declare a conflict of interest for 9.2 because I'm employed by the La Haye River Credit Union, and I am one of the trained trainers for financial literacy. And 9.3 because the individual being recommended is my boss, and I don't want to get in trouble in either place.
All right. Good call. Thank you. I appreciate you declaring conflict. Thank you. Mr. McClellan, did you want to give an update on that?
Sure. So we were approached by, through the, through the mayor to council. I was approached, or town was approached by the La Haye River Credit Union to partner in their delivery of a financial literacy series called "Each One Teach One." And the program was quite interesting to me, particularly where council and some of our council priorities have talked about housing affordability. And in fact, you know, the focus on our, on our Smart Cities challenges is attacking energy poverty. So when we had an opportunity, and simply their ask was a couple of things, to help them find some space, print some limited materials, and such, I was really keen to help with that because I felt that it aligned with the things that we want to do and will help residents of Bridgewater improve their financial literacy and help us enable moving people out of dealing with poverty. So as such, I've drafted this report for council's consideration to endorse a partnership on the delivery of this program.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Some prepared to make a motion.
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse a partnership with La Haye River Credit Union to deliver "Each One Teach One" Financial Literacy Series as per document 18-056.
Secondary, Councilor McGinnis, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. The next item is a citizen appointee to our audit committee. So this is a first for us. I don't believe we've ever had a citizen appointee on the audit committee. And of course, that is only a good thing to have one because it adds to our transparency and gives us another set of eyes. So is someone prepared to make that motion? Deputy Mayor?
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater appoint Corey Rogers as a non-elected public member of the audit committee for a term effective immediately and ending October 31st, 2020.
Secondary, please. Councilor Graves, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. The next item, this is an exciting one. It's normally not that exciting, but building inspection report. You're going to need a bigger piece of paper. That chart keeps going up. So as always, this is just an item for information. But when you look at year-to-date building estimates, you know, over $3 million difference between last year to this year, to the good. A town that, in the last census, could brag about being the fastest-growing town of its size in the province. And then you look at the building, and we did that with numbers that were smaller than these. When you look at the building estimates for 2018, we are certainly on track to probably continue to be the fastest-growing town in the province of Nova Scotia. And I dropped the "of our size" because I anticipate that we're going to just exceed what we did last time. So this is a good news story. And I do want to commend staff as we hear from developers constantly that it is easy to do business in the town of Bridgewater when you are a developer. We have quick turnaround, we have easy staff to answer the questions. I think we have a little bit less red tape than probably other jurisdictions. So I'm sure you all hear the same thing. So thank you to our staff. And if you can pass it on to our engineering staff as well, that'd be great. Any questions on the building inspection report? Recommendation of Director of Finance, procurement policy, procedure, approval of annual quotes and tenders. Mrs. Kaiser?
Yes. So the town's procurement policy is clear that for goods and services having a value over $25,000, procurement decision has to be made by council unless there's very specific direction to allow the CAO to do this. And these are, the ones that are identified in the report are ones that we do every year. They're fairly detailed and very operational. So we're suggesting that council could give the CAO the authority to approve these without going to council, as long as they're within budget.
Any questions from council before we put a motion on the floor? Councilor McGinnis?
It indicates to the lowest bidder, sometimes you do not always go to the lowest bidder for other conditions or other reasons.
It will come to council.
It will come to council.
It will come to council. Okay.
That's a good question, though. Other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion?
I will, Your Worship. I would move that Town Council of the town of Bridgewater authorize the CAO to make the procurement, procurement, procurement decision on the annual quotes and tenders outlined in document 18-059, provided funds are clearly identified and approved operating of capital budgets, and the award is to the lowest bidder.
Secondary, Councilor Fager, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is proposed amendment to Chapter 24 Public Sewers Bylaw. And this is pretty straightforward. We are continually pulling out fees from bylaws and putting them into a fees policy so that we don't have to go through first and second reading of a bylaw every time we want to change fees. So is there, want to elaborate a little bit on that?
This is step one. The 2018-19 budget that was approved on April the 9th contemplates an increase in the sewer rate as we start, continue to move towards cost recovery of the sewer costs. And so this particular report, all it's doing is pulling the sections out that identify the fees that are to be charged. And then once that's done, then we'll come back to you with the fees, the new fees for sewer.
Any other questions on that? Someone prepared to make a motion for that one, please. Councilor Fager?
Yes, Your Worship. That Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the intent of the amendments to Chapter 24 Public Sewers Bylaw as per document 18-060, and proceed to second reading of the bylaw at a council meeting to be held on May 28th, 2018, and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to Section 168 of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you. Have a secondary, please. Deputy Mayor Tanner, ready for the question? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Our last item is the, is an addition. It's kind of a follow-up of the last meeting we had from the Bridgewater Farmers Market. They're having their food truck rally in May. We're very excited about that. There were some questions from council. And then the report that is in your document package does have answers from staff. The motion is to simply recognize it as a special event, which then kind of triggers some stuff with staff that they can do. There's no more detail to that because there's, if you read the staff report, there's options to deal with the cost of items. So for example, they requested some garbage cans. So there's two ways to do it. Staff can bring the garbage cans down, and there's a cost of that. Or the, you know, if the farmer's market has a pickup truck and they can pick up the garbage cans, then there's no cost to that. So the thought is if we at least make it tonight the special event, then that takes care of that. The farmer's market can work with staff to figure out how best to sort the other items out. If there's something that needs to come back because there's a cost associated to it and we need to find money, then that'll have to be a discussion we have here. But like I said, in the report, there's a whole bunch of items that were requested that if the farmer's market has volunteers or has a pickup truck, they can do all that at no cost. And so it didn't make sense to debate the financial items if there wasn't anything to debate. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So we'll let them kind of work that out, and it's probably more efficient that way. So if someone prepared to make a motion about it being a special event? Councilor McDonald?
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater recognize the food truck rally on May 20th, 2018 as a special event.
A secondary, please. Deputy Mayor Tanner, discussion? A pretty exciting event, yeah.
Question.
Sorry?
No question.
All right. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. And so hopefully, it'll be a gorgeous day, and we'll, we're going to have a whole bunch of events on King Street between this and the motorcycle rally.
It was good last year.
Yeah. No, the food, oh yeah, the food trucks, food trucks in general are just, people like to walk around on a closed street, too. So any excuse to close the street for an event is a, works for me. Any other items coming from council? Hearing none, motion to adjourn?
I would.
Secondary, and we are adjourned. We have a short in-camera meeting on a property matter next door. Thank you. Look at that, Councilor Graves, you said 6:45.